I'm going to call to order the technical review, Tiverton Technical Review Committee meeting of February 25th. And we are first going to do a review of the vital at Tiverton Commons application, and Sue is going to take my place for that section of the meeting.
Hi, I'm Sue Mara from Weston and Sampson. I'm the planner that's working on this project assisting the town with a technical review. So Ashley tells me this will start with a presentation by the applicant. It looks like you guys are here and already getting started, so just maybe identify yourselves and you can get started.
Sure. Members of the board, good afternoon. My name is John Nancini. I'm an attorney with offices at 56 Pine Street in Providence, Rhode Island, and I represent the applicant this afternoon with respect to its petition that's pending before the planning board. We have submitted a comprehensive permit for this property denoted as assessors plat 110 lots 102 and assessors plat 301 lot 220 located on Souza Road and Main Road in town. And I have with me this afternoon Molly Titus of Dupree Engineering. She is our project engineer. She has gone through and prepared the plans and prepared to answer any questions that you have. We also have with us Jay Glover, who's our architect. He's the architect on the project. He's also prepared elevations and designs comporting with the site plan. We're before the planning board at master plan, so we have presented a conceptual plan. The process, as you know, is we will ultimately go and seek our state approvals, both from DOT and Department of Environmental Management, DEM. Prior to that, we will make our presentation for planning and also most likely submit our preliminary plan. We are here as a comprehensive permit pursuant to renowned general laws 4553. We have provided the density counts with respect to the number of units that are proposed on this property, which is 256 units. We've also incorporated the town's conservation ordinance and have complied with open space, making a substantial difference from what was originally presented. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'd like to have Molly kind of go through the site plan and then address any concerns, comments that you may have. We also have Robert Ferry, but he is by Zoom, so he's in our computer, and he's also available to address any questions, concerns about water. We know that that has also been a significant issue, as we heard from the planning board there pre-application. So with that, I'll turn it over to Molly.
Good afternoon, Molly Titus, Dupree Engineering. As John had mentioned, we are the civil engineers for this project. We are at the master plan level of review. The site plan before you kind of shows a conceptual layout for sewer connection in Souza. There's a water connection shown down to Main Road. Location not final as shown on this plan. I know there's a lot of concern about the crossing through the property down to Main, so there's a good chance that is relocated into Souza, the shoulder or the main part of the roadway. We're here to seek feedback today. You know, we've done some preliminary work on required fire flow and building types. We've done sewer calculations, and we've sized a stormwater management basin down at the western edge of the site at the low point. We'd be seeking permits from DEM for infiltration and maintaining, you know, water quality requirements, so it would be no off-site stormwater discharge. And like I said, really seeking feedback because we're at the master plan level at this time. You know, Jay, if you want to add anything about the buildings? I know we submitted an amended package, which included building elevations and some details. If that's anything that wants to be reviewed there.
That's up to you. I think that the, well, the planning, the planning board did have a question about the elevation, so I mean, you know, maybe it makes sense to take a couple of seconds to talk about that.
Yeah, just to give an overview of the buildings, there's 10 residential buildings creating two courtyards, so there's five buildings in each courtyard. Four of those buildings in each courtyard are three-story and one is four-story. And we do have updated elevations. I don't know if you guys have them as well, but it's gable roofs, you know, shingles and clad boards, so kind of the vernacular you see in New England, balconies, porches. And we have other buildings on site as well. There's a common clubhouse, one-story, as well as a daycare commercial building that's also one-story. And then you see several kind of garage storages around the perimeter of the parking, as well as a couple of pavilions in each courtyard, or one pavilion in each courtyard. And we also have, at the highest point on site, we do have a lookout that is accessible from the community with a playground included with it.
All right, thank you. And so I'm told the way that this normally goes is we'll go around to the different department heads and get feedback from them. Is Nate a department head technically? Do we want to start with him?
Well, Nate is the town engineer, so we can start there.
Okay.
Yeah, as the applicant mentioned, it's primarily conceptual now as far as the plans. There wasn't any engineering involved with the stormwater utilities that we would typically review. It's going to be done in the future, so we just had a few comments. We provided a memo. I'm sure you guys received it. But, yep, and I just said, you know, once, once we get the more detailed engineering submission, we'll, we'll review that. We provided a hydrant flow test memorandum. We have no objection to the methodology of that, but it will need to be confirmed once the building designs and whatnot are further along. And then we provided, we reviewed a phase one environmental site assessment, and we just cited the conclusions there, and those conclusions should be addressed in the plans once, once engineering, the engineering plans are done.
Rick Rogers, Tiverton DPW Director. A couple of quick questions. Are they going to be private or public regardless?
Private.
What, if any, town services are expected? What if any town services would be expected?
So development, excuse me, development's going to be a private development. The roadways are going to be maintained privately, as is, as will the trash removal. So as, as of now, we don't see any services being required of the town to this development. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything at this point.
Thank you. And as I should have mentioned, I'm really looking from the DPW perspective. I'm sure there's going to be fire, rescue, that kind of services.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about, yeah, no, I'm talking about snow plowing, essentially, you know, trash pickup. So there'd be no DPW services required.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Nope, chief.
Chief, oh, chief. Yeah.
So I'm Dan Murphy. I'm the fire marshal for the town.
Okay.
Just a couple of quick questions. Sir, you said there's eight, three-story and one nine-story, one four-story?
There's two four-story.
Okay, and eight, okay.
All right.
So my concerns, of course, are going to be water and fire suppression. I did look at your letter about flows, and it says that you estimate you need 750 gallons per minute according to your paperwork. NFPA 1 says you need 1,000 at each hydrant. I have, so it's NFPA 1, 2018 edition, 18.4, 0.5, 0.3. Requires you to go no less than 1,000. You get a little bit of leeway because I'm guessing these are built, going to be sprinkled because of the, the number of units in each unit. So you need 1,000 gallons per minute out of each hydrant. I'm going to, just like I required on all the other developments, you're going to have to do a model for me so that we can look at everything, and we can go from there on whether you need to put pumps in or whether you don't have to put pumps in. And if they're going to be private hydrants, I'm going to require you to have a maintenance agreement with a water department or a private entity so that if the hydrants do go down, that we are able to contact somebody to get the hydrants flowed because they have to have annual flows and the maintenance.
Can I ask a question just for the note-taking purposes? When you said model required...
Yep, so they have to do a model, hydraulic model.
That's, I was looking for the word hydraulic.
Hydraulic model, yep, computers, just like the other development on the north side I had to do. And then once, if, and then once all the system's in, we will do an actual flow test. And again, to make sure that, or you're going to do an actual flow test, not me, and make sure that it's up to the requirements and the NFPA standards. On the rest of it, we'll just deal with the construction when we get there.
Thank you.
Hi, John Frank, zoning enforcement officer in the town. Who just was thrown into this a few minutes ago, so I'm trying to just catch up quick. My only quick questions were, I have it zoned as R40, and I was trying to find on the sheet the calculations on what you had for number of units, 268 units, and parking requirements. Do we have that, parking, what your ratio is? Or is that even?
Yep.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in our plan section.
It's on the plan.
And I'll just, just for the purposes of everyone's knowledge, this is filed as a comprehensive permit, so within the state statute for comprehensive permits is a density provision and a, and a parking provision. So they would not be adhering to our zoning for that. They would be adhering to the state requirement for that.
Well, my quick questions already got answered. The only other thing, I was wondering, the pavilion, why that has to exceed 35 feet? It's already on top of the hill.
He's on, what's the hill? The lookout.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Jay, yeah?
Yeah, maybe we haven't determined exactly how high. We want it to be above the trees so they can get a nice view.
I think, I think the idea of the look, I think the, the idea of the lookout is so they could look out beyond the trees, but, and I, I, I have to double check, but I'm pretty sure we've asked that as a, as a variance request on the height on that, but that's, that's up for discussion.
Yeah, I saw the variance on the, on the four-story.
Yeah, four stories.
Units, but in order to meet the, the least necessary.
Well, the, the...
And it wasn't that, it's not that much over. I mean, it wasn't...
The, the important, the important aspect there is, our goal is to leave that section of the property that you see in the plans where the lookout is, as is. So we don't intend to deforest any of that, leave it in its natural vegetative state. And so we wanted to build that building that corresponds to what the height is out there, but we can, as we get closer to it, we can analyze that.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had.
Can I ask a few more questions?
Yeah, of course.
Is the daycare going to be a licensed daycare through the Department of Health?
Yes.
You know, okay, so that inspection for the fire department has to go through the state fire marshal's office, okay, just so you know that. Can you tell me what these parking garages are going to be, look, kind of sort of look like? Because I know it just says parking with storage, that's all, that's all it says.
Yeah, they're just one-story. I have to look, I think they're like 14 by 24-foot deep, so it's just something that someone can rent and store their car in or store, storage.
All right. So it's going to be, is it a, just like a carport or is it like a full garage?
A full garage, fully garage, yeah.
And no living space above it?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You mentioned something quickly about public access to a playground in the, in the back area there. Yeah, but I just, curiosity of that will need to be reviewed through, I don't know if it's, no?
No, it's private property and it won't be, it's not a recreational area that's under recreation, the town recreation commission. They may have to have inspections of the playground, but in deep end, the town may want that or require it, but it will fall under DPW.
Yeah, we, we don't have a, a problem with making that as a condition. I mean, that, that's going to be in an amenity that will be the responsibility of the homeowners association, so this is going to, it'll, it'll, there'll be a management company in place. I mean, these are not condos, they're, they're going to be apartments, but there'd be a management company, and so that management company will be responsible for maintenance of the, all the amenities, including the pavilion with the, with the, any, any other amenities associated with that, the lookout and the playground.
Thank you. Gated community?
Gated community? I don't know if we're going to put gates all the way around, it's a pretty large parcel, but it'll be, it'll be privately monitored. There's the main entrances to the front, and I'm sure that there'll be proper security to it.
Right, so is there going to be gates and stuff?
I don't think so, no, no. And, and, you know, any gates that we do, do, obviously we'll run them through fire so that, you know, you have that proper access and either breakaway gates or proper keying or something like that, but, but I don't envision, right now, the plans don't show any type of fencing of gates.
If we have another chance, quick question. Is it going to be recycled? You've mentioned trash, is it going to be recycled?
Yeah, the, whoever ends up managing this or doing it, there, there are a few other vitals that are currently running, and we do, we do all of that kind of dissemination and proper segregation of trash, so they'll, they'll be recycling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As a private service.
As a private service, yeah.
Will those be incorporated into the garage units, or are you going to add those to the plans in the next phase?
That's a good question for Jay. We haven't worked it out. They'll be added to the next phase of trials.
I have one more quick question. The, I don't know, just as a matter of information, the dog spa needs to be limited to no more than three wash stations. And that's part of the concern for water throughout the town. Especially if their owner operated, where they just leave the water running while they're working on their dogs.
Can I ask a question related to that? The intent of that dog spa, is that something that's like a come, serve yourself kind of thing for people who live there? Is this a business that's operated, like anybody can call and make an appointment? How does, what's the intent of how that works?
I believe, and I, I'd have to ask the, the owner, but the intent, I believe, is for the, the people that live there, that it's an amenity for them, for their dogs.
No, Ashley, you're saying you didn't, don't usually get public to show up, but that, you know, if there is anybody here to speak on it, if you would like to be heard, I think that the, it sounds like the committee would consider that? There's anyone here for the vital application, not the, what's the second one, the friendship?
Friendship Farms, yeah. Sue?
Thought you were talking to me.
Sue Anderson, I'm in a butter in the National Register District.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess this overlook is going to be poking out on the trees, and that's what I'm going to see from my house. I, I actually have a question for you because I thought we had a 35-foot limit, and they have four stories. Our ladder truck doesn't reach that height, correct?
Who me? You're asking me about limited height?
Yeah.
I don't have a requirement of height, it's not.
But that's for fire.
I have a 109-foot ladder truck, so if it's only 35 feet long or tall, we're going to be able to reach it.
Oh, I thought...
But I, the height requirement is not a fire department, it's a zoning thing.
Oh, I thought it was a, I thought it was a fire...
Absolutely not. I have a 109-foot ladder truck.
I think someone at the, at the meeting did bring that up and had, and had that concern.
Yeah.
Right.
One of the others.
Yes, right.
But it wasn't the fire department that you heard that from, so...
Yeah.
No, I, well, I would, I just assumed it was because of the ladder truck, because that's the height it can reach.
Nope, we have, we have, the town of Tiverton bought us a ladder truck probably two years ago, and it, it's a 109-foot straight-up reach. So to reach the, and the tallest building is four stories, we'll be able to reach it.
Okay. And what about the water pressure?
Water pressure, they're going to have to deal with that if they don't have enough.
Right, because I don't have enough, and I'm down the bottom of the hill.
Well, that's why, what in my first statement was water pressure, and I cited them, what they needed, just like the, the development across the street, and just like the next development that's in front of us.
Right.
They're going to have to meet the requirements. And there's, that's, it is what it is, it's the code. I don't write it, I don't even approve it.
Right.
But I'm following with the Rhode Estate of Rhode Island, adopted as their code, and I will use it across for every development.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question related to that, just for understanding, and maybe Bob can, between the two of you, can help answer this. We are talking about hydraulic model.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, I think we know, or we believe, that, that one doesn't currently exist. If, when you do a hydraulic model, do you, you have to model like the whole thing, you can't just model a piece of the thing?
Well, they will, they will model their development. They're going to take, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it you, right?
Uh, Bob Ferry.
Bob on the screen.
So what they'll do is they'll take the pressures that they've received from the floor test that they did, and they will, and their computer system that they have, that's smarter than me, and they will compute how, you know, elevations and where all the hydrants go, and then that computer will factor in all in and say, your pressures at this hydrant, at this hydrant, at this hydrant are X, what that number is. And then if it's below the standard, then they have to come up with a system to bring it up to the standard.
Right, I get that.
Yep.
I guess the que, I'm, I'm asking these questions because we've heard, and this is, I'm not, I'm not speaking just specifically to this application, but to, to other applications as well. We've heard the notion that it's not just about what you can get delivered, but what impact that has on other parts of the system. But the type of modeling that you're talking about wouldn't address that, it would just address what they can get in this site.
That's all I can address is this development here, I can't dress, address town-wide systems. That's not for this development.
Can Bob speak to that issue? Because I think there's two different questions.
Yep, hang on, Bob. They're, they're ready for you. I'm going to make you loud. Okay. This is Bob Ferrari from Northeast Water Solutions. He is the consultant that administers Stonebridge's water system.
Okay. Good afternoon. Let me just add some information to, to reinforce some of the earlier statements made. Number one, they, we had the, as a very preliminary effort, we recommended, and the Dupree Engineering and the developer did run a hydrant test, that's very preliminary. I prepared a technical memorandum essentially to quickly summarize it. We said, listen, Stonebridge can produce the water to meet the needs, however, there's significant questions relative to pressure. And we, if you review that memo, we've advised that a pumping station will be necessary. Obviously, a lot has to go into the design of that pumping station, and we have a lot of unknowns right now, and that's on the, that's contingent upon the developer to execute that work. Just for everyone's information, just last week, the Stonebridge Board approved a contract with an engineering firm to, it's Par Corporation, to prepare, to execute a new hydraulic model of the water distribution system. There was an extremely old model that hadn't actually been used in a long time, it's outdated, and so we actually are initiating work on that new model. When, whether it's this development or any other development is proposed during the planning process, they're going to have to execute the model, or have a model run executed to demonstrate the, not just that can water be delivered to this development at the appropriate flows and pressures, but what the implications are elsewhere in the distribution system. One other thing, we actually had, had put in our memo that we anticipated a fire flow requirement of up to 1,100 gallons a minute. However, that's contingent upon a whole host of factors that I believe many are undefined at this point in time. So that in all likelihood, I would anticipate it would be revisited as, as the design proceeds. So I just want to lay out some of that base information for folks so you understand our perspective as, you know, the water supply and distribution system.
Can I ask a quick question? Bob, I don't mean to interrupt.
Sorry?
You said 100 and, say, how many gallons per minute was it that you had said?
1,100.
1,100, okay.
We said a worst case or a maximum fire flow of up to 1,100 gallons a minute is what we had projected. Again, that's got to be, you've got to look at the, not just the building height, the materials of construction, separation, I mean, obviously the, you know, representatives of the fire department can get, you know, much more detail on that. There's a whole host of factors that come into play, also are the buildings sprinkler, that has an effect on your fire flow, et cetera. So if there's any number of ways that can be modified or mitigated to some degree. But there's no question that a pumping station would be required for this development to supply water. In the memo I prepared, I looked at their, I'll call it the domestic power demands, and we looked at average day, maximum day, and also looked at peaking requirements, peak four-hour, peak one-hour, and peak instantaneous demands, because that's part of any assessment and any model that would have to be executed as necessary for the design of, of the pumping station, the booster pumping station that they would need. So, and I'll be more than happy to do my best to answer any other questions you might have.
Couple of quick, DPW Director, couple of quick questions. One is, is it 1,100 GPM? Is that per hydrant? Often the fire department would use more than one hydrant, depending on, you know, where the buildings are, et cetera. Is that 1,100 GPM into the development or per hydrant?
That's, that's, we assume that was the maximum fire flow requirement set up. I would, I would suggest that's into the development, if you will, because for that kind of, for that kind of flow, you're going to have multiple hose streams presumably, where there's multiple, you know, multiple hydrants and, and, you know, potentially a news there to get 1,100 gallons a minute, I would, I would imagine. But that's, we, that's, we had estimated as, as likely the maximum fire flow requirement based upon the information we had available at that point in time.
So before you take into, so it's 11, it's 1,000 gallons per minute per hydrant, but it's not, I mean, if I'm opening one, I don't expect the other one to have a 1,000 GPM. It's just, if I, every hydrant at start has to be 1,000 GPM, gallons per minute, excuse me. But as normal, as, as you open up the hydrant, you get less and less. But every hydrant has to be at 1,000 at initial. So it's not like this hydrant's at a 1,000, and then the hydrant further in is at 500. They all have to be at 1,000 at start.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Dan. Quick question is, will the parkour model give an indication of what, for instance, the GPM is on the distribution system on Main Road or Souza Road on an average morning or afternoon, to give a comparison to the 1,100 GPM?
Yeah, with, with any, the intent of the model is, number one, we can theoretically model any, any scenario, you know, we can, you know, dream up. But, yeah, you're starting from a baseline of what is our quote-unquote "normal" conditions, and then you overlay onto that, what's now the impact on, say, an average or maximum day with this new development, and then beyond that, you model what hap- And then beyond that, you model, what happens with a fire flow condition, and how does that affect, you know, other areas of the distribution system? Because you can anticipate there's gonna be some kind of impact, and we have to assess what that is. And that could, that can take you all the way back to the standpipe tanks, uh, quite frankly, which are, you know, further to the east, uh, south and east of the, um, of this proposed location.
Thank you.
What is the schedule for that, for that study? And is it, like, information that's going to be integrated into the model that the developer will have to do?
We've already authorized the engineering firm to initiate work, and, um, we want them to, uh, work as quickly as possible. And I would anticipate we'll have that model available, um, I'm not gonna suggest in a month, but in a, within a couple of months. I think it will be reasonably compatible with, you know, the next level of, say, planning boards in middle. We're at mes, they're at master plan right now, so they've gotta go preliminary and final, and we anticipate that that mo, that system-wide model will be available to do, to, to provide the information for the subsequent, um, planning and design stages of the project.
Okay, so not within a month, but maybe, maybe at some point after. I mean, I know, it's hard to say. I just, I mean, I think that's an important point, is to make sure that whatever hydraulic study is provided does include that information. That, I think that we, that's something that the town would probably recommend.
Please, just to further elaborate, uh, the district, the Stonebridge Fire District, they clearly recognized that we needed to get a whole new, uh, model or an updated model prepared, simply because we need that for planning, some other improvements to the system, an overall assessment of the system. But as, as everybody's aware, there's a lot of development proposals, and that just makes it that much more, um, necessary and critical that we have, we have this available. So, um, you know, it, it's, it, the, the, the need was there, and the, um, the motivation was there to, to, to get this, to get this model, um, you know, executed as, as quickly as possible.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can wait. Finish your typing. That's okay. Sandra Van Hoff, two fifty-four Fairwood Drive. Um, you say two hundred and fifty-six units. What size are we talking? Two bedroom, three bedroom?
There's a mix of three bedroom, two bedroom, one bedroom, studio.
So it's a mix.
Yeah. The least amount are three bedrooms. There's mostly two bedrooms, and then some, uh, one in bedroom studios and some three bedrooms.
The, the information is in the application, too. There, those, that breakdown, I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
Oh, I can read it.
That's okay. I just.
Forty-eight one bedroom, a hundred and sixty-two bedroom, forty-eight three bedroom. Does that sound correct?
Okay. You, all the things that are on the property are private, except for the lookout and the playground, which will be open to the public. Is that?
That's still private. I think so, yeah.
No?
Yeah, no, I, I think at this point, that is still private. That's part of the amenities for the, uh, for the development.
Oh, so the playground is not open to the public. I thought that's what you, what was said.
Uh, no, I, I actually, I'm, I'm not sure on that. I'd have to get back to you, but I think it's all part, it's all private, so it's all, it's all, um, maintained by the management company, and it's all part of the development. So it's not an open site for, um, for use of the public. It may be used for the daycare, but I don't think it's a, it's a public property. But, uh, but the rest of the land is open space, so that hasn't been concluded as to how we're gonna handle that, whether we're gonna deed it to the town or maintain it. So if we do end up deeding it to the town for, um, or as part of, you know, if we deed it to a land trust or we deed it to the town, that will may change the, um, how we handle that, um, that playground overlook. That may end up becoming something that the town can utilize. If we just do a dev, a conservation easement, or if we just do a non-development easement, we'll maintain the right to that. So that's a detail we haven't worked out yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a quick thing on the fire pumps. Um, clearly, it sounds like you're gonna need them. Just we, when we're developing this, just can we have a backup plan or backup pump? Reason being is, we have a development that has the same situation, has pumps, and they shut them off because it was a problem, and didn't tell me for three days. So we had no fire suppression for three days. So we need to kind of work that in.
Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the committee? Then I am going to cede the chairmanship back to Ashley for the next application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming attorney mates to you.
Thank you.
We're just gonna pause for two minutes, let these guys gather their things, let the other group come in. All right, we'll continue with the next application. This is Friendship Farms, plot two fourteen, lot one twelve. Major land development project, comprehensive permit. If you guys wanna take the floor, you can do a brief presentation.
Thank you. Attorney Matthew Landry from the Office of Bliss and Kavanaugh, on behalf of the applicant's Tivern Investments LLC. Joined by Lynn Small, uh, to my right, from Northeast Engineering, she prepared, uh, excuse me, prepared the site plans, the engineering details, stormwater calculations, uh, and the like that, um, are being reviewed, uh, by the board. And Mark DeMello, also on behalf of the applicant, is here, um, to answer any, um, questions that may come up. I'd like to just provide a, a high-level overview. This is really the first, um, instance that we've had to receive feedback from the TRC. Um, this project is proceeding under the comprehensive permit statute, like the application before us. So there's somewhat of a different set of standards that applies to this. We've asked for a number of waivers that are allowed under the state statute. Um, this is a comprehensive permit application, which means twenty-five percent of the proposed units will be, uh, deed restricted to affordable housing. We do have a letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing. At the time of the submission, we asked for a waiver of that. We have received it since. I just wanna, um, put that on the record. Um, it is a preliminary plan application, so it's a pretty comprehensive submission. Includes a traffic report, a number of narratives to explain the densities, um, and some of the other things that, um, this project contemplates. This is a project, uh, located on a large sixty or so acre parcel off of Stafford Road. It has a significant amount of frontage on Stafford Road, and one of the questions I know came up in the staff report was access along Glendale Avenue. Uh, there's a question about the, um, status of Glendale as a public street or not. I'll address that. Um, it's our position that all that's required is, um, a right of access to, quote-unquote, a public street. And I can have Mark go in a little bit more detail about what's being proposed, but, uh, there is, um, an easement proposed and a land swap deal with the approved subdivision, um, that we currently have access to, that will legally and permanently establish that right of access, um, over Glendale to Stafford Road. So we don't anticipate any issues with that. Um, but generally speaking, the high-level overview, the density here, we're proposing a hundred and fifty-five units, uh, thirty-eight affordable units at eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. Uh, there is an HOA proposed. There's a declaration of condominium, um, you know, preliminary draft that was submitted as part of the submission. They will be well-integrated throughout the development, uh, and there's an integration plan that was also, um, part of the submission, and we can, you know, highlight that as we go through, uh, the process. Uh, this is being proposed as a two-phase development, which is pretty routine. Even with the extinguishment of the master plan level, it's possible to proceed, um, as a phase development, even at preliminary plan. I've done so on a number of other projects since that, uh, master plan went away. Uh, the whole project can be approved and vetted at preliminary plan, and then proceed in phases to final plan with the appropriate conditions that, uh, the planning board may, may deem necessary. Um, we see, we see no reason why that can't be done. Um, the first phase of the development, uh, is for seventy-one units. That's on the front part of the sixty-two acre parcel. Uh, there was some confusion, uh, and I apologize for that in the submission, as to the exact unit count and what, or what was not being proposed. Part of that is because there are some existing residential units already on the property. Uh, so just to clarify, phase one is seventy-one units. There's an existing duplex with two units, uh, closest to Stafford Road. Those are gonna remain. There's sixty-eight new residential units being proposed, um, and duplexes, uh, all two-bedroom, uh, units, and there's one freestanding condominium unit that's being proposed. So that's where the seventy-one units comes from, and I know there was some discrepancy in the submission, but that, um, that's the first phase. Uh, the second phase will include eighty-four units in total. There's two freestanding condominium units, uh, that are three-bedroom units. Sixty-six units across thirty-three duplexes, uh, that are all two-bedroom units. And then there's two apartment-style, garden-style apartment buildings to the rear of the property that will house eight units apiece. So that's sixteen units total there, uh, for a total of a hundred and fifty-five units. And again, the affordable component will be, uh, integrated as is required throughout the development. In terms of the, uh, density calculations and yield plan, um, we, we can clarify that going forward. I know there was some question about how the developable land area was calculated. Under the state comprehensive permit legislation, um, there's minimum density bonuses that are allowed, depending on whether utilities or some utilities are provided. Uh, that's what we're subject to here, and that's between three to five units per acre. Uh, so we evaluated this, uh, based on those minimum density bonuses. That, that's not a cap. Those are minimums that are allowed under the act. Uh, this property was also zoned R sixty, um, prior to the, um, conservation zoning that went into effect. It's our position that, because those amendments have not been approved by the state, there's no state-approved plan with those amendments, the R sixty zoning, um, and the prior existing comp plan, that's in effect, um, that's in effect for this project. So, um, under the Comp Permit Act, there needs to be an approval based on a state-approved plan, and those amendments have not yet been approved by the state, um, through that process. So, um, I, I only say that for clarification. Um, we'd like to continue working in collaboration with staff and Ms. Sweet, um, as the prior applicant that you heard today has done, to see what we can do to conform to that conservation development and those standards. Um, we want this to be an open dialogue and work with the town. I think that'll be helpful. But that's the basis for that position, and the two density calculations that we've submitted are based on the R sixty and the three-acre zoning. Um, we tried to analyze both to show what the max yield would be. I mean, that's really only twelve to fourteen units. And I think the max under the state density bonuses was around a hundred and fifteen units or so. So we're at one fifty-five, and, you know, we can continue to work with the town on, um, that density, the max density. But that's some context between, behind what the yield plan was that we presented. We can clarify the buildable land calculations. The, the density calculations that we did submit were based on removing the wetlands and, uh, things of that nature, but we can, again, clarify that in more detail as the staff report had, uh, requested. Uh, the project, uh, will include individual OWTS systems and a larger shared system for the two apartment-style buildings. Um, the project meets all RIDM, wetland setbacks and applicable regulations. Uh, there was a question about, uh, water. You know, I know water's a hot topic in town. We're working with, um, an independent hydrologist to determine the water capacity. Our initial request to the North Tivern Fire District did not indicate an issue with capacity. I actually went to one of their recent board meetings to get some insight and feedback as to what the capacity issues are, and they did speak briefly about this project, um, and how we're in the queue. So we'll continue to vet that and evaluate that. We don't anticipate any issues. But obviously, we need to address that, um, in the same amount of detail as the previous application had, um, discussed. So we'll continue to do that and work with the town and share our hydrology, um, with staff. The project may evolve based on how that calculus comes back. The need for independent wells or shared public well may be necessary, and the, um, setbacks from the wells in that radius may also impact the development. So we're aware of that. We're evaluating that, and we'll share those findings with, with staff as we move through the project. But I just wanted to be open about that and understand that we're addressing those issues, and, um, we'll share those calculations. Uh, in terms of the road access, again, Mark may be able to provide some more context on this, but there is a deeded right of access, um, to Glendale, to Glendale Avenue, as of now, over that subdivision. What we're proposing is a land swap, giving about four thousand square feet of that land to the, um, existing residential development there. It's actually Mark's brother, um, in exchange for that permanent easement. But there is already a deeded easement. I, I just wanna make it clear that that's already on record. We already have access. But this will clarify who owns the land and provide the necessary access for the development. And again, we don't see any issues with that. All that the statute, uh, requires is, um, access to and from a public street, and that's how we're proposing to access, uh, the development. That's my high-level overview. Um, I could ask Lynn to go, uh, into more detail over the plans, septic designs, stormwater runoff, water calculations, anything that the TRC might have, um, or have Mark address. Any of the other, um, questions or concerns that may come up with respect to the public, um, road access. But Lynn, do you have anything to add or comment on, or if anyone has any questions and may be helpful to solicit some feedback from the board?
It's up, it's up to the board. If you want me to do a presentation, I can do a quick presentation of the engineering for the project, and then if you have any specific questions, I can try to answer those for you. So basically from, well, we're, we're splitting the project into phases, and that was, um, also part driven by the site characteristics. As you can see, the site has a rather wet, large wetland that, um, breaks the project into, um, in half, basically. That makes it, lends itself to a phased development. And that was, um, early on in the project, we talked to DEM Wetlands Program, and they had actually recommended that that's how we go through the permitting through their office. Because as you probably are aware, you can do a certain permit for a project that is surrounded by wetlands or in the proximity of wetlands, but once you put a roadway or access driveway through that wetland, it changes the, into a more involved project. So they wanted us to get that first piece permitted, um, for the project that's surrounded by the wetlands, which is essentially phase one, and then submit the more involved application to the state for the phase two project, where we actually have to put that access driveway or roadway through it.
I have a question about that. I, I'm not sure you'll know the answer. Um, when, if DEM looks at the first application, understandably, because there's no wetland crossing, it's a different type of review process. When they do look at that second application, are they considering that first application in their review, or are they looking at that second application in isolation?
So that's a good question, and I will do my best to answer it correctly. They, so we already have the wetlands permit for the phase one of the project. They've already reviewed and fully permitted the first portion of the project. When they are looking at the phase two of the project, it is somewhat dependent on phase one, that we have to have a portion of that roadway constructed as, in order to gain access to phase two. But you don't have to have a hundred percent of phase one to build on phase two. So I guess it's, it's a little bit of both. They're looking at the application, at application, phase one is a hundred percent independent of phase two. Phase two is somewhat dependent on phase one, and that is why they asked to do phase one first. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I think for Clara- And I think for clarifying, you're just talking about the wetlands piece of it, correct?
That is just the wetlands and ripdies permits through the DEM, yes.
Are you doing the septic, the OWTS permits in two phases as well? Because I have the same... The question is more about the OWTS than it is about the wetlands. So if they review the OWTS on the Phase One, when they look at OWTS on Phase Two, are they looking at what they just approved on Phase One? Or is that being looked at completely independently?
So the septic program is going to handle it a little bit differently. Wetlands permit, you can basically pull your building permit and stop building, assuming the town's on board and everything, okay? In the septic program, when you have a project like this where you have multiple septic systems throughout a development, they do what's called a subdivision suitability permit, which is basically an overall permit for the entire development that shows what you're proposing for septic systems. And you have to have test holes across the site. You have to size out those septics, but you're not doing every single elevation. You can't actually build that septic system from that permit. What happens is you get that subdivision suitability approval. It says the DEM septic program is good for you to do a septic in this spot for this many bedrooms, but you're subject to an individual septic design before you can actually build it. And that will be required by the building official when we go to request an actual building permit for each building. Some of those will have a shared septic. So you'll have one septic that works for multiple buildings. And other ones will have, you know, an individual one where you'll have one septic for each duplex. Did I answer you? I know it's very complicated, and I apologize. You're welcome. So the drainage system for the development meets the state codes. We have pre-treatment system where we're removing the sediments that you collect from the roadways and everything. And then it goes through water quality treatment, which is mostly sand filter systems. And then it goes into detention areas, which will reduce your peak runoff from your proposed conditions so that you're not exceeding those from your existing conditions. Part of the package that was submitted to the town includes a full drainage analysis and watershed maps. So these watershed maps basically cut the site into pieces where you can see where those areas will drain and how we've provided the stormwater for those areas that drain to those different points. And then we have design points where you can measure existing compared to proposed. The state has reviewed that and has agreed. We do, we are subject to a local review as well from an engineering standpoint. And I expect we'll get comments at some point from engineering if they have any questions on those. But that's kind of like a broad overview of how that drainage system has worked. It's a three-phase system. The roadways are 22 feet wide. We do anticipate that they remain private.
Yes.
And we do have municipal water and electric shown throughout the project.
I'd say 20.
Is it 20 square and then curves to 22? Yeah.
Just to clarify, because I think...
It's 20, yeah, they're shown as 20 foot wide.
With, right, with a foot of berm on either side, yep.
Did you guys have anything else you wanted to present to us before we kind of go around the table?
No, I don't think so. Obviously, this is, we're kind of at the infancy stage here, and we'd love to hear feedback and comments and, you know, work with the board on, you know, any areas that need to be addressed. So I welcome any feedback you have.
All right, I'm going to start with Nathan.
So we put together, Weston and Sampson put together a memo. We reviewed the plans and stormwater and the traffic study. The first note I have on the memo, which if you haven't received it, we'll get you a copy, is just that we haven't got any of, any of the permits, the state and local permits that you have to do. I'm assuming you're in the process of that. So there's obviously a lot of resource areas on the property nearby, high groundwater, things like that, things to look into when you're doing the permits. But it sounds like you're through that, getting through that process. Regarding the stormwater plan, we reviewed the, we compared the stormwater calculations, the stormwater management plan with the site plans. We have a list of technical items that we'd like to be reviewed. We have some things to be clarified, a couple, you know, elevation differences compared to the plans, compared to the hydrocap calculations, items like that, if you, once you get the memo to address. So that, so we went through the 11 minimum standards. The main one, minimum standard one, the LID methods. There was no narrative provided as part of that. Sometimes we like to see, the board likes to see a narrative explaining the process and how you met the 10 LID standards. So we recommend that the engineer provide that documentation. And then our technical items, things that we noticed between the plans and the calculations affect minimum standards three, four, and five. And provided that those technical comments are addressed, those standards would be met. And then the actual comments are a little mundane because it's a lot of elevations and things like that. But we have a couple of pages of just things to check and things like that. So things like the routing in Phase One compared to Phase Two, there's a couple of routing differences that we couldn't clarify, things like that. And the, and then general comments. One of the sand filters, SF8 on the plans. I've shown the plans, but it's not found out in the model. So that was one of the things we noticed. There was some elevations and drainage information on C-23 that were cut off. So we couldn't, we weren't able to review those elevations. The invert of, the, a couple of the inverts of some of the pipes were missing. And then, this isn't really storm related, but on the checklist, item 14 was checked off. It says F, which is the, that Class 1 survey is needed. Stamped by a professional land surveyor, and I didn't see that on the plans. And then item 40 was the independent peer review hydraulic model, but it sounds like that's in the process. But that was checked off as not required, not requested, but it sounds like you're in the process of that. The water main, we, is shown on the plans, but it doesn't look like all the hydrants are shown quite yet. So all the hydrant locations will need to be shown for fire and utility confirmations. And then you notice there's no hydrants at the dead ends. So if you're going to put any at the dead ends, just make sure like for snow, they're kind of off to the side so that they cloud in. And then regarding traffic, it wasn't stamped. We recommend that it be stamped, it should be stamped. Table six of the traffic study is missing one of the site distance requirements. It was just kind of blank in the table, so if that could be added and updated. And then a couple of minor comments. The introduction didn't mention Glendale Road. It only mentioned Stafford. We just felt like, since it's, you know, the main entrance is on Glendale, it should just kind of just have a control explaining Glendale Road. There's three references to Division Road, but we weren't sure if that was going to be just a type of... We just couldn't find the Division Road on the plans. And then truck turning templates for the, since it's a 20-foot, 20-foot road for actual drive, the driving part is 20 feet. Truck turning templates for trash and fire would be, would be good so we can see maneuverability. Sheet C-21, the parking spaces should be, just have dimensions so we can just make sure that they meet local requirements. Mark, which ones are any? And then the apartment building didn't show a shared trash receptacle. So I didn't know if the plan was to have trash or if everyone can have individual trash.
We took it to be individual trash because everybody got to buy their bags anyway, so it's not going to put any extra pressure on, you know, DPW.
And that maneuverability template should have, you know, the trash truck and fire truck different dimensions. Like I said, I think if you haven't got the memo, we can definitely look into it.
So we did, okay, just wanted to make sure because I know we sent it.
I think I have it.
I have it, this is a...
Okay.
So we'll put a response to comments back on any revisions that we make for the plans that are resulting.
Great.
I'll circulate you.
Rick?
I think I heard, but I want to clarify. Are they going to be private or public roads?
Private.
What town services, if any, are going to be expected in terms of not counting fire, rescue, police? What town services will be expected?
We just think it would be just the, which is really not a town service, but DPW, trash collection.
Right, so that, yeah, that would be a town service, Mark. So you expect the town to collect the trash and recycle?
Yep.
Anything else?
I think that would be it.
Okay, because the roads are private, there's going to be no snowplow, no maintenance, potholes, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, and because they're going to be private roads, I'm not going to bother asking what's the right-of-way width of the road? What's the depth of the road? What's the gravel, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? There's no intent to have these turned over at any time for town ownership?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
With that said, we do meet standard roadway, the vertical profile for construction. We don't want them falling apart either.
Right.
It would be an issue, Lynn, if we were going to take ownership, not just the vertical, but the right-of-way dimension too, since they're going to be private.
Okay.
Next.
John wants to go first. Two quick questions. You mentioned something about your capacity with the wetlands calculation that was done was 115, and you're at 155 on number of units. Can you go in depth a little more on that?
Yeah, so the total proposed is 155 units. I think as part of the yield plan under R-60 and conservation zoning, there was a grid that we put in, one of our narratives, and I think staff's report highlighted it. The max density, I think, was 14 units, and then we reduced it to 12. That was the max yield. I don't have it in front of me, but the 110 or 115 units that I referenced was what would be allowed under the state act, the three to five acre, three to five units per acre that's allowed if you're on public services. So that 110, 115 unit factor was suggesting what the yield could be under the state act, under those density bonuses.
Okay. And then secondly, mentioned briefly about the turnaround calculations, but looking at the plan, every road is a dead end. So there need, I think, just briefly, looking at the plan, you're going to lose out on a number of buildings on the end of those roads if you have to put turnarounds in, for sure. Just a brief review of the plan. And then also parking. Are those buildings, the two duplexes, are they going to have under garage parking? Or are they just driveway parking?
It's surface parking areas.
If I may add to what John is saying, it's my understanding, but again, I defer to Ashley or the town solicitor, that the terminus of all the roads has to meet town requirements for turnaround, even if they're private roads, whether it be a cul-de-sac, whether it be a T, but it has to be suitable for any trucks that you're expecting collection for trash and recycle and the largest fire department vehicle. So dead end is sort of a common term, but what's at the dead end? Is it a T? Is it a cul-de-sac? And what's the radius? And Nathan did cover that, asking that it be shown so you can see the truck radiuses.
Yeah, we can certainly supply that.
Yeah, and the duplexes in Phase Two, I know that's down the road, but Phase Two, the duplexes, that kind of dead end, there's eight of them that are... there's no turnaround or anything set up, established there either at all.
Would you like me to come back to you?
No, he just wanted to go first.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're so nice.
Yeah, I don't want to kill his thunder. All right. So we'll keep, we'll stay on the turnarounds just real quick. Any street that's longer than, according to the NFPA code, which is the National Fire Protection Association, any street that's longer than 150 feet is required some type of a turnaround. And again, I know they said cul-de-sacs, T turnarounds, Y turnarounds.
Can you just repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, any street or access longer than 150 feet is required some type of a turnaround, whether it be cul-de-sac, whether it be Y, T. Parking spots are not considered turnarounds. Like somebody's parking garage, no, because somebody's car is going to be there. So our largest truck, and it's probably going to be the largest of everybody, is my ladder truck. And I will get you the turnarounds. I'll give you my card, and I'll get you that information. So any street, any access that's longer than 150 feet, we can work on the proper turnarounds. Again, I don't choose them, you choose them. It's just going to be a requirement of signs, fire lanes, don't park so that people don't think it's a parking spot, okay? So in regards to water, because that's another big topic. This gentleman here said wells, you said municipal water.
The intent is municipal water, but we have an independent hydrologist evaluating the potential for wells or probably if that's necessary.
All right, so if you go wells, are you getting rid of municipal water?
Well, if we can't get the capacity for municipal water, it would be private. We're intending to be municipal, but we would, if it can't be supplied, then we would go to private. So we're evaluating both.
Because then that would, then what are we going to do in regards to hydrants? If you go well, what is the situation that's going to curtail now with hydrants and water supply and fire protection, especially when you have two eight-unit buildings in Phase Two?
So on other residential projects that I've worked on that did not have municipal water available, we were, we provided storage tanks and that the fire, we filled the first, and then the fire department usually wants to take over. But that's something that can be discussed.
Yeah, we're not taking ownership of it because we don't even, we don't even have, all right. Because I'll tell you right now, because we don't have the money to pay for us.
Right.
And we're not going to be maintaining, but the question is not how many cisterns we're going to put in, how big are they going to be, where are they going to go? That's going to be a bigger issue.
And we'll have to work with you on where those are and how big they are, et cetera.
Okay. Also, and I know people are talking about streets, again, the NFPA, I love because they... Streets are 20 feet wide minimum, and then 13-foot clearance, vertical. I mean, that's spelled out in the code. And if we're going hydrants, the same story that I gave the last one, if we're going municipal, you get, is it duplexes and then single and duplexes throughout, other than those two units in the end?
That is correct right now, yes.
Why are you changing that?
Well, I'm not sure. We've got to make sure everything works.
Oh, okay. So you get, again, hydrants, 1,000 gallons per minute flowing for one hour, where the other development is two hours. So we'll work with you on the hydrants. And I know the gentleman, hydrants are very tough to come by on the plans. So we'll work with you. So just look at the National Fire Protection Association's code, and it gives you locations for hydrants. You get a little bit more of a span because it's single-family duplexes. But the backside, where you get into the eight units, you fall under a more restrictive code, okay? So just look at that, and we'll discuss all the hydrant and cistern. I ask you respectfully, request, please don't put cisterns in, but I get it.
I have a question for you.
Yes, go ahead.
What, how do you, because this is a roadway that's designed with some fingers off, like what's the, at every 150 feet, like, is that like there?
Yes, every, yes, every, every dead end that's more than 150 feet is required a turnaround.
Okay.
Yep. Quick question, and because I like more than one access, and I want to throw something out that you probably already thought about, can we get an access off of, is it Fairwood Drive? Is that, because it kind of looks like there's a.
There's no access.
All right, because it kind of looks like there's a road there, but not a road there?
I think it's a depiction, when you look at the area, I think it's a depiction of somebody's drive, like driveway area that they've.
I think it's along there now, but unless we do a title search, try to find out there was an option.
Yeah, there was no easement put in place that we could find.
It just in the plan, it kind of shows that there was a street there or something.
It would have been nice, we wouldn't have had to cross the wetland.
Yeah, right. Because I like to have, try to get, you know, two accesses, but I get it.
Yeah.
You all set?
Yes, good.
Yeah, I was concerned about that, that much wetlands, but you've already got DM approval on Phase One, so hey, that's not, comes under us. I am concerned about the increased traffic on Stafford. I know there's a traffic study, but in the 43 years I've been reading traffic studies, nobody that writes those ever says that there's going to be a significant impact, but yet the traffic just gets heavier and heavier. And sometimes, yeah, without a second access, it's the same thing, it's tough to, to load the increased traffic down.
What's that?
What's that?
I need one else, have anything in addition to what we've already gone through?
All right, so I will open this to the public, and I just want to remind you all, we're looking at the technical side of this. The entire development is looked at by the planning board, and this group does not make a decision. We make a recommendation to the planning board, so just please keep that in mind when you, when you address the, your concerns. Go ahead.
Sandra Van Hoff, 254 Fairwood Drive. I don't remember what the lawyer's name was, but a couple of clarifications. I think I heard something about removing or moving wetlands? No?
No, certainly not.
Okay.
I think that was when you said you were removing it from developable land area.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so Ms. Small just clarified, so I talked about removing wetlands or from the calculations. The town and the state requires a calculation based on developable land area, and that requires you to exclude wetlands from the total acreage.
Oh, okay.
So it reduces, it's sort of a, it inflates the number if you include wetlands that you could never build on, so the regulations require you to remove the wetlands from the calculation so the yield.
Okay, so you're not, so you're not filling in the wetlands to, okay, all right. I think you also talked about you're figuring out the bone density, the bonus density here is based on R60 instead of the R120, because the town did not get the zoning changed, approved up at the state? Is that?
So, yeah, it gets a little bit technical here, so because we're under the state comprehensive permit legislation, there's a different set of standards, and we can request waivers and relief from the town regulations to that extent. When this application was certified complete, and it still is the case, the recent changes to, the recent amendments that the town passed for conservation zoning haven't been approved yet by the state, and all amendments to the comp plan need to be approved by the state office of, the Office of Statewide Planning. The regulations approve, require approval or denial of comp permit applications based on a state-approved plan, and it's our position that because the new amendments have not been approved by the state, the old regulations are still in place, but it doesn't really matter, because the density bonuses that are allowed under the act are three to five units per acre, and that's what we're proceeding under. But we've agreed to work with the town and the planning department to address the concerns over conservation development and the standards that have been passed, to see if we can do something to better conform, like the other applicant before us has done.
Okay, and I'm not sure who it was, but there was some talk just now about, I think fire wanted to know if there would, could be more than one access in and out, and somebody said something about, I think it was you, Mr. DeMello, title search?
Yeah, if I could take a stab at it, so we, we need some type of deeded access or right-of-way access, which we have to Glendale Street. There was a question over whether or not we could use Fairview Drive where that cul-de-sac is, it looks like there's a connection on the map, but it's private property that we have no right to, so we wouldn't be able to, to do that. I think what Mark was referring to is, you know, we could review the title records to see if that is an option. I'm not aware that it is, that's a separate subdivision, but the reference to that second access.
The people down there own the land.
That's correct, yeah, it's private land, and we have no right to tie into it, but it would have been nice if that was contemplated years ago.
If you don't mind, a few minutes, and could you clarify Fairview Drive is what you said?
Yes, is that what's on the plan?
Fairwood.
Oh, I say Fairview Drive, is it Fairwood?
Fairview is up at the top?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
See, I'm not familiar with any of the Fairview, Fairway and Fairwood.
Fairway and Fairwood.
But I'm not familiar with Fairview as shown.
Is that Fairwood? Or maybe it's just a.
It's Fairwood.
Oh, I'm looking at our plan, maybe we just have it identified as Fairview rather than Fairwood.
If your plans say Fairview, they're wrong, it's Fairwood.
It's Fairwood.
Yeah, we can, we can correct that, I apologize if I'm.
No, I knew, I knew what you were talking about, I know exactly which little piece.
I'm not finding fault with typing or anything like that, I just wanted to make sure I understood there was not some street in which that was not.
No, I appreciate that, I wasn't aware of that, I apologize for that, so we can correct that.
Right, because there's a Fairway at the top of the development, and then there's Fairwood.
Yeah, it looks like on the overview plan, it's incorrect, but on the more detailed sheets, it's correct, so we'll fix that.
Okay.
I can't take credit for that, that's Nathan, you mentioned that title, so thank you.
I have another question, we're talking about the turnaround needed for trucks and fire vehicles, what about school buses?
Well, if they, if they get it for the fire truck, for all ladder truck, you can turn anything around.
Right, so, so, but I mean, what the plan right now is, what's the plan for school buses?
Well, I think there are standards that we need to comply with in terms of turn radius. These are private roads, so it's not as stringent as if they were public streets, but we'll have to submit a turn radius plan to the, to the town to address this.
Right, but I, I could be wrong, and the superintendent's not here, but I always understood that children did not have to walk further than a mile to get the school bus, and the kiddos in Phase Two would be further than a mile, so.
Well, I don't want to speak on behalf of the school department, because I'm fine.
I'm not either.
But I would say that the school bus would just drive down the Phase Two, it's just, again, any street that's longer than 150 feet that's dead end is going to need a turnaround, and if we can turn all ladder truck around it, they can turn the school bus around.
It was just.
Either that or.
It was just a thought as to something else that needs to go down that one street and come back up.
I have a question, though.
Wait, 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 we got to do one at a time, and I'll give everyone a chance, but we have to do one at a time, and we can't have people just talking from the audience. Just for your knowledge, the memo that was given to the applicant identifies the fact that there is little to no information on trash receptacles, snow storage areas, school bus locations, mailbox locations, so that's information that we'll expect to see them provide at some point in the, in the near future.
Okay.
So we have, we have flagged those items.
It's on somebody's radar.
Yep, we have flagged those as needing information about how that's going to be managed, where that's going to be located.
Now, I know what Kathy was just going to ask, is if it's a private road, is the town required to provide school buses to go down it?
I don't know what their, what their policy is, that's something that we will definitely have to, that will have to get figured out. I don't know what their policy is on going down private roads, but it is something that will have to get resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
I may, I may be incorrect, Ashley and Sandy, but my memory was on the Cassett Reserve, although it may not be accurate information, my understanding back when they were having those meetings, that they were going to be private roads, and that the discussion was the school does not go down private roads.
That's correct.
And it was a little bit of a hubbub, because there was discussion about the school making an exception in going down those private roads at the Cassett Reserve. I do not know if that is accurate, but that's certainly my memory.
Yeah.
And I also don't know what the final resolution was, but it was clear to me at the time that it was not the past practice for the school to go down any private roads.
Right, right, and where we're looking at, and this is just a comment, where we're looking at multiple of these developments throughout the town, this is one issue that needs to be clarified, because it could possibly come up in other developments that don't have good access, or turnaround, I should say.
It's an excellent point, in my opinion, so thank you, because I wouldn't want the town drawn into a controversy later on.
Correct.
And there's a public outcry of why don't the buses go down there?
Correct.
It should be resolved ahead of time.
And how that relates to the distance that children walk, don't walk, you know, there's a whole fishbowl of things that go along with school buses. Okay, thanks.
Next.
Hi, excuse me, John Baylog, 29 Elk Drive. We have some concerns about the safety of that inter, intersection, you know, the proposed road on the Glendale, so my question is, whose responsibility is it to evaluate the safety of that intersection?
So the applicant is responsible for providing a traffic study that is supposed to address the impacts of their development on the surrounding area in terms of traffic.
So you're saying the developer does the impact, the state, the study?
The developer provides a traffic study as part of their submission. It is up to the planning board if they would like to have, I mean, we also have a town engineer that reviews that, and I think you heard there was some comments and questions about that traffic study. So it's provided by the applicant, but it is reviewed by the town's engineer and commented on, and we will continue to go back and forth on those until the town engineer says that all their questions have been answered.
Will it be available for public vetting, too?
Everything that's submitted to the department that goes to the planning board is a public record, so you're welcome to come, ask for, you can look through the file and request copies.
Okay, and just a little bit further, like, you know, that proposed road intersection with Glendale and Cowaboo, I mean, you know, they're like parallel roads, roughly 200 feet apart, you have to make a, you know, a strong right-hand turn, the propensity, you know, the, for an accident occurring, that intersection is fairly high, is that going to be evaluated? Is the likelihood of an accident, it's a single point of ingress, right? So God forbid there was an accident there, and the fire station had to serve somebody, and they couldn't get through, how would that be addressed?
Well, like I said, the applicant provides a traffic study that is supposed to address the impacts, and I know that accident data is part of their traffic study. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't talk to you about specifically how an intersection is evaluated by a traffic engineer, but it will be provided, their traffic study is provided, and as I said, our town engineer does a review of that, that traffic study.
Got it. If there was an accident at that intersection, does the fire department have, I mean, do you develop any contingency plans for how you would get a fire truck around if there was an accident?
Into the development of Elk and Drive?
Either one, either one, because it's a single choke point.
Well, we, unfortunately, we have a lot of single choke points in this town, unfortunately, we deal with what we have at that point in time.
Right, but at the planning level, if you can, you can throw in a contingency plan, it's better than going in blindly, correct?
Well, that's why I asked if they could come in through Fairwood, all right?
Fairwood.
All right, but unfortunately, they don't own the property, because it does look on the site map that they do look like a street, that's why I asked the question, but since they don't own it, they can't do it. So I can't require a second means of entrance or regress, I can ask for.
And no direct ingress onto Stafford Road either?
I, it's not up, it's not up to the fire department.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, 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 right.
Yeah.
No, but, you know, with, you could impose requirements on street width or anything like that to get around.
I can, I can, street width, according to the code, is 20 feet wide, 13 feet tall.
And so if there was a, you know, a car there, you could get around?
Yep, that's why we made, I made that comment earlier.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I just have another question, and maybe the engineer could answer it. The study impact report that they had done, the traffic, yeah, the traffic one, it says 55 cars are going to impact the going out of Glendale in the morning, and 55 at peak hour coming back in. Now, you're looking at between these two phases, and both phases have to use this one access road. You're looking at a lot of cars, a lot of people living there, a lot of people having to go to work in the morning, coming home in the afternoon. I know, and I live on Fairwood Drive, we, and we're nowhere near the size of this, we have quite a few cars going to work, coming home, and at times, it is tough to get out onto Stafford Road. Stafford Road is a busy road besides Main Road, it connects, you know, Little Compton, people coming down from there, they want to get onto 24, they go down, Crandall, down Stafford. So at those peak hours, it's difficult, and 55 cars is nowhere near the number of cars. It's, it's got to be more than that. When you, you look at how many units there are, and you put, even if you just put two adults in a unit, you're looking at over 300 adults, and in today's world, most people each have a car, most people are going off and coming home from work, so you're talking 300 people with 300 cars, not 55. So when you're looking at the impact of the amount of traffic onto Stafford, it would appear that it would be much more than what this traffic impact study predicted.
In our, so we have a traffic engineer specifically that only does these, review this, and he looked at the proposed condition, so I can, I can get back, I can get back to him.
You know, just, I, I'm just thinking, and I'm not an engineer, I'm just a retired teacher, common person. You know, just, I, I'm just thinking, and I'm not an engineer, I'm just a retired teacher, common person, who is looking at the numbers going, how can it only be 55 cars?
So I just want to clarify for everyone that the way that those traffic studies get written is based on national standards. So they look at the type of development that you're developing and what the average daily trips are at peak hours, and that's what's applied to the development to, to show a, I just want you to understand where the numbers come from.
My thing is, like I just said, I'm just a common person using common sense. If you have even that many adults living in that development, there's got to be more than 55 cars. I don't know how, what they plugged into their computer program, but my little brain figuring it out on paper and pencil.
Understood. Just so you're aware, like I said.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just trying to point out.
Can I, let me finish. There's a set of standards that they work under, and you're not the first person to suggest that those standards might not be entirely realistic. That's not, I've been doing this a long time, and you're not the first person.
Oh, I'm sure.
But it's a, it's a set national standard by, you know, the, whatever the Traffic Whatever Association. Sorry for getting the name wrong to all the traffic engineers. But that's, I mean, that's the universe we have to work within. They're going to be responding to it based on a review of whether or not they pulled the correct standards. It, it's, there's often a disconnect between the science behind a traffic study and people's perception of traffic and what they see on a daily basis. So we expect that there's going to be conversation about that. This is not the first time we've, we've had those types of discussions, and we will, we will have to work through them at the planning board level.
One of the comments on this traffic impact study, they called Stafford Road, I believe the term was minor or minimal road. Well, if you live in the town, like I said, everybody coming from Little Compton, down that area, South Tiverton, they're either going up Main Road and getting on the highway, or they're coming up Crandall and Stafford. So not only is our development, not only is this new Friendship Farms going to add traffic, you've got to take into account all those people. It's, Stafford Road's not a minor road for traffic in the town.
Again, these are, these are not standards based on people's perception. They're, they're national standards, and there's, there's
I just want.
nomenclature for types of roads.
Just wanted to get it out there so that maybe somebody will look at it.
I don't expect this will be the end of the traffic conversation, for sure. Next, please.
Michelle Dunn, 66 Elk Drive, yes, a traffic comment. Because I read through it, I did notice the errors on Division Street, so that makes me really question that was supposed to be a comparison road, and so I question the validity of that. In addition, I've done a traffic count in our, I live on Elk Drive, so in that development, there are about 49 units, and I was only able to verify 38 of those, and in the morning, there are 43 cars leaving. Now, this study, according to the Rhode Island DOT manual, it's supposed to be done on an average day. It was done in August. August is not an average day. School is in session 10 months out of the year, so that is not an average day. In our development alone, we have six people who work for the school department, so that would have been six additional cars in and out of the development. So I do feel that that traffic is, traffic study is weak, and that there should be another one done on an average day, which would be a school day, because I think the numbers would be different. And based on the number 55, if you count the traffic already coming out of, in and out of our development, 55 is a very low prediction.
Susan Baylog, 29 Elk Drive. I have just one question. On this property, is there another way out for Stafford Road? Like where his two little, his two duplexes are? Why can't they put a road down that way?
Because there's a massive wetland in the way.
Could they build a bridge over the wetlands? I, I. Maybe they should think of that.
Go ahead.
Hi, Susan Anderson, Main Road. So this plan looks a lot like the Harkins Plan for Pecasset Reserve, where you have development on this side, development on this side, and you had a street between them over the wetlands. When the DEM reviewed the plan for them, they said, no, you cannot have a street going over wetlands, and they made them change it. So I, I really don't understand how DEM can approve the street going from the Phase 1 portion all the way over to Phase 2 across all these wetlands, when they didn't do it in Pecasset Reserve. That's my comment. The only thing they allowed was an emergency.
Right, I was going to say, there is a road at Pecasset Reserve.
But not, but not, it was not to be used for, yeah, but it was not to be used for the development.
There's a second access point.
Right.
Souza and Fish. To get into each side.
Right, but I'm, I'm very concerned that DEM's not going to, not going to prove this. I'm not concerned, I'm just saying.
History, history.
I just want to clarify one other thing for the easement. I looked on the Tiverton standards and the state standards for low and affordable housing, and talking about access, and it was on your website, that all proposed land developments in all subdivision lots have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street. Physical access by means of an easement across adjoining property or a lot frontage on a public street without physical access from required street frontage shall not be considered in compliance with this. Is that applicable?
I don't know where you're reading from, so I'd have to pull it up for context, if you want to tell me what you're reading from. But it has, there, there have been questions raised about access.
Okay, so.
But if you can give me the citation that you're reading from, I can put it in context and better understand how it may apply.
Okay, yes.
You don't have to give it to me right now. I can look into it.
Yes.
But it, we, there have been questions raised about access.
Because this was updated in, on the town records in 2023, so it's very recent.
The other thing to keep in mind is that we are working under a state statute for comprehensive permits.
I understand.
So it, there are instances where the state supersedes the town's ability to impose its own regulations. So that's why I can't, I can't necessarily answer the question. I'd have to look at where that comes from.
Well, I'm just working with a land use lawyer, and so those are the things that we're looking at, that where there are some things we can, in fact, control.
There are, and then there are other things that are out of our control, and that's why we have to, we have to take all of that into context when looking at, at requirements, and whether we can enforce them, or whether the state mandate on affordable housing and the ability to file a comprehensive permit supersedes the town's ability.
Okay.
And so we, we're going to look at each of those independently. We just haven't gotten to that point of making determinations about those issues yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick thing that I didn't mention here for this group. If you're going to do hydrants and they're going to be private, we're just going to have to have somebody, you know, have an agreement with somebody to maintain them.
Me too.
Just like I did, I just wanted to put it on record.
I can't maintain it?
No, not you, Mark. No.
All right. Do you guys have anything else?
No, um, so I think when we were at the initial meeting, it continued to April 1st, and we may have already discussed this, but we'd like to set something up with staff and planning to talk about the conservation development, go through that process. And I think, I don't know if we could do it now or soon, to set something up to do that. And if we need to continue that April 1st meeting, or whatever it is, if there's a discussion and requires some revisions to these things, I think it would be helpful to come back to the TRC to look at those changes. But I, I welcome that meeting, and I think it would be helpful to everybody to have an open dialogue with that.
Before you leave, why don't we coordinate schedules, and we'll set, we'll set up an initial meeting to start that conversation?
Thank you.
Will that be a public meeting?
I, I think initially it's going to be a discussion between the applicant and staff, and it may result in changes to the application. I, we don't, I have no idea. But any changes to the application will be brought to a public meeting, for certain. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, I will adjourn the meeting of the Tiverton Technical Review Committee at 3:52. Thanks.